Good evening, students, staff, and community members. Welcome to the first-ever candidate forum sponsored by Rocheappa, a social studies honor society, and service club Warhawk Interact. My name is Alan Whitmoyer, and I will be moderating the forum tonight. Assisting me in asking questions this evening are Rocheappa members Noel Urban and Ty Javier. Jess Lavalley, another member of Rocheappa, will read two statements from candidates who declined to participate in the forum tonight. Rocheappa member Cadence Klostermeier will be our official timekeeper. We welcome the candidates attending this evening: Mr. Garrett Galster, Mr. David Landis, and Mr. Tim Langer. Thank you for your time and willingness to participate in this forum. In order to ensure a positive and successful event, we will have a few guidelines for audience members and candidates. We will begin by giving the candidates an opportunity to introduce themselves. Each candidate will have two minutes. The first speaker, Mr. Galster, was chosen randomly, and the next speaker will be the person to their left. After all three candidates have introduced themselves, the statements from the candidates not attending will be read. These will also be limited to two minutes. From this point forward, the person who speaks first and last will be rotated. Candidates will also be allowed to make a two-to-three-minute closing statement which could be utilized to further clarify or expand on any of their answers in case they did not have sufficient time. The questions asked tonight were selected by a committee of students from those submitted by Arrowhead students and with ideas from other community school board forums. There will be two rounds of questions. The first round will consist of shorter questions, which will have a one-minute time limit. The second round will consist of longer questions, which will have a two-minute time limit. The timekeeper will hold up a yellow card when fifteen seconds remain and a red card when time is up. The audience is reminded that the purpose of the forum is informational and nonpartisan. The intent of the forum is not to support or oppose any candidate. We request that audience members be courteous and respectful of opinions that may differ from theirs. Please refrain from applause, as this will decrease the amount of time candidates have to answer their questions. Audience members will not have an opportunity to ask questions during the forum, but may have an opportunity to chat with candidates informally after the event is complete. We will now begin with the introductions. Mr. Galster, you may begin.
Thank you, Alan. Good evening. My name is Garrett Galster, and as stated, I'm running for the at-large seat here at Arrowhead. First of all, thank you to Rocheappa and also to Interact for organizing such an important event tonight. I'm happy I can be here in person to contemporaneously, or in real-time, answer any of the questions that come up. It's, I feel like there's a lot to gain from face-to-face interaction, and I'm glad I could be here. My family and I live in Dellafield, town of Dellafield, but we have a Peewee mailing address, and the kids go to Heartland School, so it's one of those mix mash places, I guess. I have a sophomore here at Arrowhead. I have a seventh grader at North Shore Middle School. I have a four-Ker at Heartland North, and I have a soon-to-be four-Ker who will also be at Heartland North. I was born and raised in small-town Wisconsin. Public secondary education all the way through from, well, primary, from kindergarten to fifth grade, or eighth grade, and secondary education in high school. I then attended Marquette University and earned my engineering degree there, went to work in the engineering field for a few years, then went back to law school and got my law degree. I've been practicing law since 2006. So, I run this year to hopefully remove some of the vitriol, some of the contentiousness on the school board that's been witnessed, and I hope to approach it in a logical, rational fashion. So, in my answers tonight, what I'm going to try to do is to explain how I would approach certain issues. I don't know that I can officially state what my position would be on any particular issue, because I'm not going to have all of the facts, all of the law, all of the tools I need in order to make that decision in front of me. But I will, I hope, to answer the questions to my fullest.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Garrett. So, I'm David Landis. I live in the town of Lisbon. I've got my wife, Rachel, and we have two kids, both of them are at Arrowhead. One's a senior, and her name's Samantha. I've got a sophomore named Brady. We moved here in 2008. We used to live in Waukesha. We've been here, obviously, ever since. I'm an Arrowhead graduate, so I graduated from Arrowhead in 1991. Some of the things I was involved in was swimming, and I was in Broadway bound, just like my son's in Broadway Company now. Let's see here. After Arrowhead, I went to Whitewater. Went to UW-Whitewater from '91-'95. Graduated with a Bachelor of Arts in History and Political Science minor. After graduating from Whitewater, I worked at Strong Funds, which, you know, obviously had everything to do with history and political science, right? But I became, there I became interested in the IT field. So, since then, I got into taking computer programming classes, just trying to expand my knowledge on that, gain it and expand it, and use that to turn into a jumpstart to the software development career. So, in 2005, I was at FISERV, and I worked there until just about, almost last year, a little over a year ago, 2021, December of 2021. I switched careers, not careers, jobs over, associated bank now. So, I managed a software QA team. Basically, just, you know, why I'm interested in being on the board is that I've been watching what's been going on since 2021, and saw a lot of radicalization of what was happening with the school board, and I guess the interactions and stuff, and so kind of along the same lines as Garrett is, I'm trying to maybe stabilize things and represent the students.
Thank you, Garrett. David, I'm Tim Langer. I am a sitting board member and unopposed, so I guess I take some confidence in the fact that I've run for election. I believe this is my sixth time and have not faced an opponent yet. I, too, was an Arrowhead alum. I've lived in the village of Heartland, town of Dellafield, town of Lisbon, and now most currently in the town of Merton, so I think I've got the Arrowhead district pretty much Before joining the board, I had been president to the Arrowhead Scholarship Fund, in fact, initiated the practice of accumulating funds from year to year rather than having it be a pass-through entity that carried a zero-dollar balance. The fund that we started, boy, a little over twenty years ago, is now, I believe, approaching a million dollars, and reserves that are available for each student here as they apply for colleges and apply to the scholarship fund for that opportunity. I did that for just about ten years, and did it because I felt like it was important to give our students a sign, you know, that we support them, and that as they pursue their academic career outside of Arrowhead, that the Arrowhead community stands behind them. When a seat came open in 2011, I was asked to come in and interview for it, and I was appointed, and it seemed like another opportunity to give back to a school that I care greatly about. I appreciate you all being here tonight, and I look forward to having a lively discussion.
I'll be reading Mr. Chris Ferris's statement first. Hello, administration, Board of Education members, teachers, students, and constituents. With a heart full of gratitude, I extend my sincere thanks to the esteemed Rocheappa Club for the invitation to Arrowhead's forum for school board candidates. As we gear up for the election in April, I feel privileged to share my position on this forum. Over the past few weeks, I have been receiving requests from various groups and websites to post my views on certain topics and participate in various forums. After giving it much thought, I have decided to reserve my Facebook page and website as the exclusive platforms for sharing my positions and vision, as well as my record as a Board of Education member for the past two years. Hence, I will not be participating in any open forums, debates, or other websites. As a devoted father of my three beautiful girls, my decision is also based on their well-being. As a board member, I have often heard my daughters complain about the harassment they receive on specific topics that arise. Therefore, I have decided to protect them from such incidents, especially since this is their senior year. Once my term ends in three years, I may consider participating in such forums once again. For me, my faith in Jesus Christ remains my top priority, followed by my family and career. I believe that by placing my family above everything else, I am securing a bright and prosperous future for them, and for that, I have no regrets. Having said that, I would love to meet anyone who wishes to share their thoughts and perspectives with me over coffee. My door is always open, and you can easily contact me through Facebook or my school email account for this. In conclusion, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for the unwavering support and encouragement I have received thus far, as well as this invitation. Let us all celebrate the fact that we live in a country that values our freedom of expression and choice. Regardless of the outcome in April, I am confident that we will continue to create a brighter future for all our students. God bless and kind regards, Christopher Ferris. And now I'll read Mrs. Hammer's statement.
Hi, Arrowhead School District and Community Members. My name is Amy Hammer. I wish to thank Rocheappa for hosting a candidate forum for the Arrowhead School Board. I respectfully decline the invitation, but I do appreciate the opportunity to provide a statement. I am a candidate for reelection to the Merton seat on the Arrowhead School Board. I am currently at the end of my second term at Arrowhead. In the past, I also served for two terms on the Merton School Board. I am asking for the honor of your vote on April 4th or before. Our school board has done a lot of really good things that I am proud to have been a part of, such as hiring a new school superintendent, selling the Vittler Farm to raise money for special ed, passing a policy against teaching critical race theory, passing parent-friendly policies such as those allowing parents to have a say in regards to pronouns and having the opportunity to see their child's curriculum, keeping taxes low, and maintaining one of the best teaching staffs and administration around. I firmly believe that we have to focus on reading, writing, arithmetic, and history. Let's stop political ideologies that are trying to take root in our schools. Of course, we have many reality challenges ahead. Foremost, finance. In 1993, the Wisconsin Legislature froze schools' per pupil revenues. Since Arrowhead was fiscally responsible, our per pupil costs were low. Hence, we have been frozen at low levels ever since. We need to update and change the formula at the state level with our legislators. Arrowhead has always been a very high-performing school. However, for the past eight years, there has been a noted decline in many test scores. This decline is being addressed. We are also focusing more on reading. Wouldn't it be nice if kids devoted more time to reading books rather than looking at screens? Other concerns looming ahead: the pool, maintaining buildings and grounds, the school schedule, bullying, et cetera. In addition, we must always work to provide the best education possible. Lots of challenges, but with our wonderful teaching staff, administration, students, parents, taxpayers, and my fellow board members, we will meet the challenges head-on. Thank you for your time and consideration, and hopefully your vote. Let's keep Arrowhead great again, and again, and again.
Thank you, Jess. We will now begin round one, consisting of questions with a one-minute time limit. The first speaker will be Mr. Galster. Question one. What sets Arrowhead apart from other schools in Wisconsin?
I looked up the other day that there's 831 high schools in the state of Wisconsin. Arrowhead's the fourth-largest. One of the things that sets us apart is Rocheappa. We're the largest school in Wisconsin with a chapter. Otherwise, I think we have a fantastic staff here at Arrowhead, and what we need to do is, we need to bridge any sort of communication gaps between the board and the staff here at Arrowhead. And we need to hire great people and keep great people that we've got, and make sure they have the tools they need to do their job. And I think that many people may have moved here because of Arrowhead's track record and legacy. So, I think that the results of the students here at Arrowhead and these fine examples we have here tonight, that's what sets us apart.
Thank you. We will now move to Mr. Langer.
Well, since Rocheappa got some remarks, I would say Interact sets us apart. As a Rotarian, I'm very proud of the organization that is operated here under the heading of Interact. I also think that it's our families and students that set Arrowhead apart. We have unique challenges that are different than many of the things that you hear complained about in other districts. Our challenges frequently are serving families and students with great ability and high expectations. And for a staff to be able to serve all students, and in particular, be able to challenge our most talented students, it's almost like teaching several classes within a single classroom. I can name many other things, including our basketball team, but Arrowhead is a unique institution, and it's privileged to serve.
Thank you. Mr. Landis?
Yeah, so I would say, first and foremost, the teachers. You know, I know when I went to Arrowhead, I had many good teachers, some that made like lasting impacts on my life, set me in the right direction, inspired me, and so it follows up on, I know what Garrett was saying about, you know, trying to bridge a gap here. One of the important things with Arrowhead is to retain the trust and with our staff and admin, to make sure that we keep those good teachers, to keep inspiring kids. I'd also say it'd be the different programs that are here. I mean, there's so many different things you can get into, as far as sports, activities, everything. You know, if you're physically gifted and want to play football, you can do that. If you want to be in Broadway Company and do that, there's so many choices. So, I'd say all those things together make it stand out.
Thank you. The next question will rotate to Mr. Langer. He will have the opportunity to ask this question first. As a potential representative, you will have to choose between two forms of representation. In the first, a trustee, the representative considers their own beliefs when making decisions. The other, a delegate, does not weigh their own opinion at all, and rather does the will of the constituents. Which side do you feel you fall into?
Boy, I remember learning about those two concepts in my political science class at Arrowhead High School many years ago, and I wouldn't believe that then that I would give the answer that I'm about to give now, but I think I would consider myself in the trustee camp. I feel like my constituency, as a rule, has elected me several times because they trust my judgment and recognize the amount of time that's invested in between school board meetings and trying to keep up with the issues of the day. And it's be very difficult as we dive into the minutia of some of the more boring aspects of school board work to attempt to seek out opinions even from a few people, because frankly, there'd be no reason for them to learn about a lot of the budgets and other matters that are taking up our time. Thank you.
Thank you. We now go to Mr. Landis.
Yeah, so I think, following up on that, I think it does, for me, it matters a lot what exactly policy we're talking about here, because, yeah, when you get into the minutia of things, more boring things, you know, you want to try to use your expertise, your life experiences, to just try to make straight-ahead decisions, but dealing with things that are more of, where they affect people, affect kids, affect their lives, you know, I would think I would want to try to weigh things more from the constituent's side, trying to see things through their eyes and, you know, their feelings and how things would go for them if I made a certain decision. So, I think that's where I line up.
Mr. Kloster?
Thank you. I tend to agree that I don't really fall into one camp or the other. I do agree that in some of the more mundane administrative things, the constituents likely don't care, or if they do, those considerations can be taken into account, but it likely may not influence decisions one way or another. I like to analogize this type of a question with wearing glasses, and oftentimes, one needs to take off their own glasses and put on the glasses of someone else, and I think framing that lens, framing that viewpoint, is important when making decisions that are going to impact people beyond those that may think like you, that may have your same life experience. And so, I guess I would have to say that I don't really fall into one camp or another, but rather would like to weigh all pros and cons.
For question four, we're going to start with Mr. Landis. And question three. At previous school board meetings, the topic of restricting classroom content was discussed. What role, if any, do you feel the board has in moderating classroom content?
Well, I think it's definitely something that needs to be discussed if it's an issue, if it's a question, concern of, you know, the constituents, of the parents and whatnot, but I think we have to be really careful with this. It's a fine line. You started trying to moderate everything, and you're going to start stifling free speech, you know, you could get into banning books and all these kind of things, which is not what this country's about. It's not what our education system is about, and so I think it's a very, like I said, it's a very fine line. It's something that can be maybe brought up, discussed, but I'd hate to see a heavy hand of the board in moderating content.
Thank you, Mr. Galster. You are next.
Yes. I tend to agree that if we put the, and keep, the great talent that we have in the classroom, that largely the content can be up to those instructors to the extent that it complies with the law, right? There are certain mandates by state law that we have to provide education on certain subjects. Also, we cannot hide the truth. We cannot fog over certain situations because they're uncomfortable, certain situations because we don't like to talk about them. Rather, we want to raise responsible and educate responsible young adults to understand the world as it was, to learn from history, so as perhaps not to repeat certain circumstances.
Thank you. Mr. Langer, you are next.
I can't ever remember a high school kid falling to their knees in tears when a topic that was uncomfortable to them came up. I don't think we're in danger by having open and robust discussion of just about any subject. I will tell you that, as things have heated up in the school board room over the last few years, I've heard a consistent message from a lens of my community that politics has no place in a school, and I don't know that that's true. I think kids probably talk as much about politics as anybody. There probably is not a good place for a teacher to take a position for or against a particular political view, and if I were to follow the instructions of the community, I guess the only role I would have is to try and focus on education and not on political discourse as an element of curriculum.
All right. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to question four, starting with Mr. Galster. School boards across the country have recently began restricting or removing books from school libraries. If elected, do you intend to implement similar bans at our school?
I'll save you a bunch of time on this one. No.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Langer?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question?
Of course. School boards across the country have recently began restricting or removing books from school libraries. If elected, do you intend to implement similar bans at our school?
Boy, I thought there might have been some subtlety there, but I agree with Garrett. No.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Landis?
Well, no, of course. But I'll just say a little bit more. I just, yeah, I think the whole notion of it is ridiculous. Again, it's, there's a lot of talk about freedom, you know, we're in a free country. You hear that a lot from certain groups, and it's true, and to me, that extends to everything, especially including books. If there's a book that a parent doesn't want their student reading, they can certainly take it up with a teacher and get an alternative book. There's no reason for like a wide, you know, wide ban on anything. So, no.
Thank you.
So, question five, beginning with Mr. Langer. The Pawnee School Board has a full-voting member of the student body on their board. Would you support such an addition to our school board, and what would be the benefits or shortcomings of such a change?
So, there's been some discussion within the school board about that concept. I don't know that a full-voting membership for a student is appropriate. There are some matters that are dealt with within the personnel function of the board that are not appropriate for students to be participating in. But generally, there should be a voice from our students about the topics of the day, and if we had a designated representative, or I believe we talked about two representatives from the student body to voice the views of the students, I think that would be helpful to the board.
Thank you. Mr. Landis?
So, yeah, I think that would be a good idea. I think having the students have a voice is important. You know, like Mr. Langer was saying, it's, I guess, some of the stuff is maybe a little touchy as far as trying to get decisions made with students involved, but I think overall, I think it's a good idea. It's, you know, like I said, getting that voice. I mean, they're the biggest constituents, the most affected constituents of the board, so having, you know, one person maybe, or two, you know, that could represent the students and pass on their beliefs or their concerns, their questions, would be a good thing.
Thank you. Mr. Galster?
Yeah, I really like this question because it gets down to the process of the school board, and that's really what I want to focus on. And I do believe that having a representative, I would propose one from each campus, one from North Campus, one from South Campus, be involved in board discussions. I tend to agree with Mr. Langer that having a full-voting member may not be appropriate, especially when it comes down to certain sensitive topics that the school board does undertake, but to have that voice at the table, there is a voice during certain school board times to vocalize your opinions. However, having that one representative at the table to be able to provide input from their students would be very helpful, I think.
Thank you. All right. So, question six, beginning with Mr. Landis. The National Institute of Health urges schools to start no earlier than 8:30 a.m. for the health of the student body. If elected, would you explore a later start time with the bus company and local elementary schools?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I went to Arrowhead, and we had the same start time as you have now, and it's pretty brutal, especially when you're a teenager. If you're in activities, if you have a job, and you're trying to do homework at the same time, you could be up till, you know, midnight or whatever, and then trying to get up early in the morning to start your day again. So, yeah, I think I would. I do see the benefit, I guess, of, you know, doing the earlier start time because of activities. It allows activities to start earlier, but as far as kids being able to maybe get a little bit more sleep, I think it's, there's a big benefit there.
Thank you. Mr. Galster?
Yes. This goes back to the lens topic I was talking about earlier, and that is understanding that different people in different positions in their lives may physically or physiologically be capable of learning at 6:30 in the morning versus 8:30, 9:00 a.m. I do struggle with the after-school activities situation, homework, and all the demands that are put on students. However, I would, regarding the question, absolutely, I would explore it.
Thank you. Mr. Langer?
Nobody has more sympathy for the, you know, early start and the burden that puts on our students than I do. I have heard the explanation many times over the years as to why it is the way that it is. I understand the logic behind it, but I certainly would accept any comprehensive plan that let our students start later and still allow for all of the things that need to happen after school to happen. I have frankly racked my mind on, you know, how I might contribute some useful thought to that, and I have not come up with a feasible solution, but, boy, if you've got one, I'd be all in favor. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will go to Mr. Gallister. Wisconsin State Statute 118.331E allows the required number of PE semesters to decrease from three to two if students are in a varsity sport. Would you support the implementation of such a policy, which other Wisconsin schools have implemented?
Yeah, and just to clarify, it's my understanding that the current policy is three semesters?
Pre-required, yes.
Yes. I do believe that involvement in extracurricular sports and other activities, for that matter, is very important to a well-rounded student. I also believe that there is some exposure in physical education in the school that you may not otherwise get if you're, let's say, a varsity hockey player. Maybe that's your sport, that's what you like to do, great. But there's other aspects to the physical education curriculum that I think are beneficial. So it's not just, to me, it's not just about the physical activity, which may very well be taken care of and likely is taken care of if you're part of a varsity sport. So I would consider it, but I'd wanna maybe understand a little bit more about the concerns of all those involved.
Thank you. Mr. Langer?
It's my understanding that where schools adopt that policy is primarily done as a cost-saving measure and not as an intended benefit to the students. One of my focuses as a school board member has been to try and expand the connectivity that may exist among all students. It's pretty easy at Arrowhead to be a college-bound kid that's taking all sorts of AP classes and never crossing paths with what I sometimes call the dirty fingernail kids who are in the shop classes and preparing for life after Arrowhead that is not gonna involve a four-year education. And the more opportunities our students at the, you know, extreme academic end of the curriculum versus the shop and tech ed end of the curriculum spend in the same room, getting to know each other and having a commonality in their life, I think the healthier they're going to be as adults and in understanding others. And so I keep gymnastics the way it is just to allow for that interaction.
Thank you. Mr. Landis?
Yeah, as long as the, one of the semesters, you have to do line dancing. That's real important. Yeah, no, I mean, it's something I would consider. It's something that definitely could be talked about. But I do see the benefit of physical education, just being exposed to different sports, be it, you know, swimming, football, basketball, all the different things that you could do. And it's amazing now, I know with my kids, signing them up for physical education, the different types that are offered. I mean, it's not just straight, like when I was here with Mr. Nielsen, I don't know if anybody remembers him, but he was like, you just run, you know, run, 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 run. He was great. I'm just kidding. But, but yeah, I mean, there's so many different options now, so it's, you know, it's kinda nice that they maybe keep it at three, but it's something that could be talked about, looked at.
Thank you. The next question goes to Mr. Langer. Should schools be permitted to carry personal devices at school? Should students, sorry?
So I think this is, I'm not a tech guy, but I think this is the phone question. So I, I will tell you that as a basic operating philosophy of mine, I believe that we should maximize the amount of time kids spend in a classroom. We should maximize the quality of education that they get, and we should maximize the amount of information that passes to them. We're told by eighty percent of our teachers that phones in classrooms inhibit learning. Eighty percent of our teachers don't agree on anything, and they agree on that. I realize that that is a hot topic that I may stand in a serious minority on, but I would tell you that I think our students would learn more and gain valuable life experience of operating without a phone if we banned it. I think it would help our kids.
Thank you. Mr. Landis?
Well, you know, I can see that the value of phones not being available during class. So, you know, from what I understand, there's teachers that use a policy of when you come into the class, you put your phone into like, say, like a cubby or something like that, and then that's used to take attendance. And if it's not in there, then you're considered absent. So during class, then you don't have the phone. To me, I think that's good. That's something that, so you can focus on your studies. But the type that of, you know, we use the word ban because that's what I've been hearing, of, you know, an entire day, and not just a ban of not being able to have your phone, but having fines up to a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred dollars, I think, was where it topped out if you had your phone. It seems a bit much. I think there's ways of limiting phone time, but not taking away from the whole day. You've got parents that wanna reach out, you have coaches that wanna reach out to kids during the day, give updates. So I think it'd be a bit much.
Thank you. Mr. Gallister?
Yes, and I understand the question also to be referring to phones and not personal computers or anything else. Regarding phones, I tend to agree that they don't belong in the classroom other than whether, they may form a portion of a teacher's curriculum. If in fact that's the case, then of course they should be allowed in that type of a class. I'd go one step further to suggest that we might wanna consider a class on how to be a responsible phone user. When students leave this campus, they become contributing members of society. And unless they know how to responsibly utilize the powerful tools that these devices are, then they're gonna get in trouble, and there's gonna be problems. And so I would, I would say that should personal devices be allowed? Sure, but not in class, and I think we should teach kids, all of you, how to use them.
Thank you. This concludes the end of round one. We will now move to round two, which consists of longer questions with a two-minute time limit.
All right, Mr. Landis, you will start this one. What do you see as Arrowhead's biggest challenges, and how would you address them?
Yeah, I know we got asked by the Freeman, you know, the similar question like this. And for me, I mentioned it before, I've seen a lot of, a lot of breakdown of trust, you know, between the board, staff, admin. There's accusations, there's things of, you know, requirements that are being made of, under the guise of transparency, where it's really just, you know, like a deeper dive, it seems like, into like what's going on in class, when there's, you know, just basic learning going on, and there's access already to the curriculum via Canvas. So there's things like that, that concerns me a lot. Having a good staff, having good admin is key to a good school. Without it, you're not gonna have a good school. And without a good school, you're gonna see property values, which is a big deal around here and everywhere, but especially here, you're gonna see them dwindle. It's not, the school isn't gonna hold the value that it does now, and that's a huge concern for me. Outside of that, you know, there's always the big thing of money. It's, we've talked about that a lot with revenue limits. You know, the school needs a lot of work with the grounds. And, you know, we're, you know, kind of our hands tied when it comes to funding, as much as we need at least. So there's things like referendums, donations, things to be looked into, 'cause there's some real big concerns, I know in my, with my campaign, I've mentioned the pool. That's a huge thing for me, being an ex-Aerohead swimmer. It's a very old pool. It was considered old and cold when I was there, when I was here, by other schools that came. And now it's very old and it's probably still cold. So, yeah, I think that's the biggest thing, biggest things.
Thank you. Mr. Gallister?
Yes, the way I break this down is sort of threefold. One is governance, and that is the relationship that the board may have with the staff. And when I say staff, I mean, I mean everybody that works here. I don't, I don't just mean teachers, I don't just mean administration, I just mean everybody that works here. And I would like to, in order to bring the board together with the stakeholders here at the school, I'm committed to meeting with all of the department heads here at Arrowhead to discuss what their concerns are, be it curriculum, be it board governance, be it facilities, be it money. All of those things would be discussed. It would be an open agenda, everything on the table, so that I could learn what is most important to them. Also, just internally on the board, I think that there may be some challenges in, and I think Mr. Langer said earlier about politics not really having a place in school. And I generally agree with your comment that politics may have a place in school to have political discussions and so forth, but political partisan agendas don't. And so I think that we need to get back to focusing on the practical process and procedure and making sure that we have a legitimate basis for the things that we're proposing as a board and that we're achieving the goals that we're setting out to achieve. So I'd focus on process and procedure from a board perspective. Then there's a practical perspective, and that practical perspective gets back to the funding. And it frankly is hamstringing us somewhat, as I understand it. And I've just scratched the surface. Mr. Langer is much more in the weeds in this. But I would volunteer to be the main or part of the legislative contact with Madison. I'd travel to Madison, discuss this with legislatures to try to get us more funding.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Langer?
Yeah, I mean, the things that get in the newspaper and the controversy that you hear about with regard to the school board exists on one level. But where the kids get taught and textbooks get bought and facilities are repaired, all of that costs money. And frankly, Arrowhead is gonna be running short of that. It's scary. I came onto the board when Act Ten had just been passed, and school funding had been cut, and people were panicked, and the, you know, funds were reallocated in ways that made it functional. But that's been going on for a long time, and school funding has not kept up with the rate of inflation. If it had, we'd be getting three thousand dollars per student more every year. That three thousand dollars per student, when you've got two thousand students, it's been a long time since I was in an Arrowhead math class, but I think that's six million dollars a year. We need that money, and we need it for our facilities, we need it for our program. And we are going to, even on our current trajectory, be as much as one point two million dollars short next school year. So that's six months from right now. Two school years from right now, we might be two million dollars short of the total that we're already one point two million dollars short of. It's scary, and it's as bad as I've ever seen it. And this board has been as fiscally responsible as any board I've ever been on, whether it be in a charitable organization or a business organization. We run lean and we run pretty well, but things have gotta change. And I have to say, I think a referendum is the only solution, given that nothing's happening in Madison, the whole parkland.
Thank you. Next question, starting with Mr. Gallister. In the age of constantly changing technology, what role should technology have in classroom instruction?
Yeah, coming from an engineering background, I think technology should have a heavy role in classroom instruction. In the engineering world, if you don't innovate, you die. And so I believe the same to hold true somewhat in technological classroom instruction. That said, I do, as stated earlier, believe that, for instance, mobile phones don't really have a place in the classroom, unless they're part of the curriculum. But other technology, 3D printers, you know, computers to learn, computer programming, IT skills, automotive skills, computer manufacturing skills. I think all of that, and I think Arrowhead has a phenomenal program in some of those areas that I wish I would have had in high school. I think I learned how to wire a light bulb in high school, and it was on a piece of wood with a porcelain pull-chain light bulb socket. So what is provided here at Arrowhead is just phenomenal. So I do believe technology has its place. However, I was much more of a verbal learner, and I think that there are some people that learn well from technology and technological integration, such as video, such as audio, such as smart boards and that sort of thing. And so I believe that teachers should allow to make, be allowed to make those choices as far as the tools that they use to accomplish their educational goals, but they also need the flexibility to recognize, I didn't say this in my introduction, but I'm also a professor at Marquette University Law School, and I understand that students have different ways of learning. And so the teacher should be allowed to utilize technology to the extent that we can afford it in their classrooms.
All right, thank you. Mr. Langer?
So this is not the chatbot question, right? I don't know how I feel about that, but as a rule, our technology is well-supported. We've got staff that are excellent, and we're fortunate to have the capacity to use technology in almost every setting within the school environment. And frankly, it is a huge plus. We're in the process of converting to a Chromebook-based instructional system. Where all incoming freshmen will have Chromebooks. That isn't, you know, the high-end glitzy kind of technology that people hope for, but when everybody can be focusing on the same materials through the same programs, it opens up some doors for our students that I think they'll be surprised what's available. It will also add three days of instruction to our calendar because we'll be able to take our standardized tests now in a single day as opposed to the four days that we're breaking it up now. But yeah, I'd be surprised if I talked to anybody who was opposed to technology in the classroom.
Thank you. Mr. Landis?
Yeah, so I think it could play a big role, or it doesn't have to play a big role. It's just kind of both ends of the spectrum there. You, you know, it depends on the teacher. You know, the teachers can do amazing things, they can do a lot with no technology, trying to reach kids and get through and show them, teach them what they need to know. But there's definitely times where technology could play a role and help enhance the experience, to help the kid's ability to learn, especially when there might be some deficiencies with learning. I know in special education, I think it plays a huge role. It can really, you know, help kids with dyslexia with learning, I mean, like attention issues. So, yeah, it's all over the place, but it's complimentary, especially when it comes to, you know, the great teachers, especially that Arrowhead has.
Thank you. Mr. Langer, you have this first. How would you plan on getting feedback or input from all stakeholders, including parents, students, teachers, and community members?
My sense is that our community doesn't have too much trouble offering feedback. And so we hear quite a bit of it as a board in our community discussion for the first half hour before the board meeting starts and public comment during the board meeting, along with pretty close to daily emails from community members and students. Parents offering insight into their feelings about the topics of the day. I'm not sure how I would modify that because it's a pretty open-door policy right now, although the idea of having a identified student representative joining the board from time to time or at every meeting, I think might offer an insight that we don't get as frequently as maybe some others.
Thank you. Mr. Landis?
Yeah, you know, following up on what Mr. Langer said, yeah, the community definitely is able and does give feedback, which is great. I mean, it's, the board needs to hear, the school needs to hear how everybody feels. But I think, yeah, more emphasis on maybe hearing from the students, from the teachers, as well as the parents. I know there's been a big emphasis on parents lately, which is good. Parents need to be able to give feedback, but at some points, it seems like the, you know, the feedback- know, the feedback from the students maybe not, doesn't count as much. And, and teachers who are, you know, in the rooms, you know, teaching and, and having to deal with things, I think it's really important to get their input as well. So, yeah, you know, as far as getting feedback, you know, the current board policy of allowing feedback before and during the, during the board meetings every month, I think is great. I know there has been talk lately of, of reducing some of that time that the, that the public has before meetings. I know Mr. Langer was rightfully so, defending the ability of, of the community to do that. So I think that's great. It's something that should remain, you know, in place. Just even if it's a topic that's not on the, the current agenda, it's still important to, for the community to be able to come up and talk to the board, let them know how they might feel about something that's could be in a future board meeting, or something that was addressed maybe the previous month or two months ago, just so the board and the school knows how they feel.
Thank you. Mr. Galster?
I share, I agree, that when there are divisive issues at the school board level, that community members and parents tend to, tend to speak up, even non-community members, frankly. Perhaps it's a bit too broad. But I think that students and teachers really, at least in my experience, maybe Mr. Langer can clarify later on, but I, I don't see the opportunity necessarily for student and teacher opinions to be heard by the board directly, however, maybe anonymously. That is, there may be some reservation by certain students or by certain teachers to not appear at a board meeting and speak publicly on their behalf or even on people, people's behalf that they represent. And so I would propose, regarding my plan, I guess I would propose listening sessions. I already indicated that I would undertake listening sessions with all of the department heads here at the school. I would also undertake listening sessions and offer listening sessions, I should say. Maybe nobody will take me up on it. But offer listening sessions with students and parents as well to get input and understand their concerns.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Landis, you will have this question first. Common complaints from students include the failure to improve the pool, leaking ceilings, the theater room, and especially traffic problems. How will you go about increasing public favorability towards education funding to address these issues that have a negative impact on students?
Yeah, this is a big one. And, you know, this is something we were just talking about before. You know, I've actually had some conversations with people out in the public about this. And there's some good ideas out there as far as maybe doing a little bit more marketing, maybe getting on the phones, calling people up. But the marketing piece, that one really hit home for me because I can remember some of the past referendums. They've been good referendums. It made sense, especially when it came to the pool and the theater, that, you know, the, the grounds are breaking down and we needed money and, you know, didn't see, the increase to the taxpayer wasn't, you know, anything extravagant. And, but the message that was out there may have been lacking, the message out to the public, especially a more aggressive message, as far as, you know, promoting how good this is, how it impacts, you know, the students, you know, the revenue capabilities that could be generated through a new pool, through a new theater by, you know, renting a space out or, you know, charging pool fees for swim clubs. There's lots of opportunities there. It's the kind of stuff we just didn't really hear some in the past referendums. So I think things like that, again, the word marketing to me seems like the way to go.
Thank you. Mr. Galster?
Yeah, I tend to agree with respect to public favorability. And that is, the way I understand the question is, how do we get people to give us money, right? And that's the, that's the long and short of it. Frankly, when we reframe the issue as one of home value, as one of community value, and emphasize the impact of not receiving such funding, I think that will improve the message that's delivered through, through such marketing. I also think we need to explain, Arrowhead's really lucky, okay? Arrowhead's really lucky to be situated in a spot and have certain alumni or certain members of the community that are willing to provide funding for earmarked projects. And I think that some of that gets lost on the public. And when I mean lost on the public, they don't realize that such funding is earmarked or could be earmarked. And that they see it as potentially, and unfortunately, they see it as diverting funds that otherwise could go to the pool, the ceilings, the theater, and diverting them to other, other facilities that they may not deem as important. And that's not happening to, to my knowledge. And so I think we need to clarify where these funds come from, explain to the public what Mr. Langer indicated about state funding. We need to explain this to our constituents and explain the direct value that they see, for instance, in their home values, because of the quality of school that Arrowhead is.
Thank you. Mr. Langer?
Well, I have to chuckle at the list that you've provided. It's one that I could repeat nicely. And it comes up annually at a minimum. It would be wonderful if there was a way to wave a magic wand and make those things better. I'd love it if I showed up at school at 7:00 a.m. and I could drive right into the Arrowhead parking lot as opposed to waiting on on North Avenue to get in. We've been turned down twice in past years for major physical plant improvements that would have solved all of those problems. Our community is predictable. And there is polling and surveying that can be done to anticipate what a community might approve. I am not optimistic that that whole list gets tackled anytime soon. I wish I were. What I am optimistic will happen is that the pool people seem to be on a trajectory towards a serious proposal that might be privately funded. That would be a godsend. I think that if proposed correctly, operationally, we could get a referendum passed that'll make certain that the education that's given inside these buildings, as flawed as they are, will be excellent for years to come and the buildings won't be falling down around us. If we get that referendum in place, then there will be room for a facilities referendum afterwards. And maybe the culture in our community has changed. Maybe there's some opportunity for that to pass. We've been pushed back hard twice now, trying to clear that hurdle. But, you know, nothing like an election to show whether things changed or not.
Thank you, Speaker. That concludes the long answer question session. Now each candidate will have three minutes to make a final statement. Mr. Galster, you may go first.
Well, first, let me say that it's unfortunate that Mr. Ferris has decided not to show up tonight. I, I really would have liked to have heard his answers to the questions posed here in real time. I do feel that there is, and have been, great things done here at Arrowhead, both at the education level, at the curriculum level, and so forth. I would like to wrap up by saying that in the process of making the difficult decisions on a school board, my plan is to follow a logical, rational, and deliberative process based on facts and based on input from those here in the community. And my actions, my votes, my discussions will not be driven by partisan politics or outside influences such as that. And so my concern is that that's happened, and not only here at Arrowhead, but elsewhere. And so I'm trying to eliminate that partisan nature of the discussion so that we can get back to focusing on why we're here. And that is to make sure that the walls aren't falling down, that our teachers can teach, and that our students can learn. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Langer?
I can tell you without hesitation, after I, because I hesitated, that I have personally liked and enjoyed every school board member that I've ever served with on the Arrowhead school board. And we, for a pretty homogeneous community, we sure have a variety of views that show up in that room and talk and evaluate and share thinking and passions. And it's a, and it's a beneficial process and it's open to the community more so now than it ever has been. And I'm totally convinced that if the two gentlemen to my right are sitting on the Arrowhead school board a month from now, that I'll continue to have nothing but a group of friends who take on serious issues seriously going forward. I think I've been redundant already in saying that money is the key here, folks. And, and the only way that we are able to do what Arrowhead can do at its best is with adequate funding. And so I, we're going to keep beating this drum for the coming year. And hopefully in 2024, you're going to get an opportunity to vote on a referendum that'll let us preserve what we've got and then move forward to a brighter, more spectacular future where our students all get the kind of excellent education they deserve.
Thank you. Mr. Landis?
So, yeah, like Mr. Galster was referring to with Mr. Ferris, I have to, of course, say the same thing about Mrs. Hammer. I know, coming, before coming here, I saw she had posted something on social media saying she was afraid of coming here because of getting biased questions. And I, I think that's very unfortunate because I found them to be very unbiased and really good questions. So, and I think she would have too. So that's unfortunate. But I, I guess in, as far as my final statement goes, yeah, you know, I, I really, the thing that I'm focused on here is, you know, getting politics off of the board, at least from this, the position that I could be in as the representative of the Merton seat. My big goal here is to try to represent all kids, all families. I think sometimes the students kind of get left out of the whole equation. And that's something that's, you know, needs to be looked at. They are the biggest stakeholders here. And that's something that needs to be looked at and they need to be represented. Also, you know, just getting back, like I was saying before, it's a big thing, getting, you know, trust with, with the staff, with the admin. And then focusing on the things that, that are really pressing right now. We've got a lot of big things in front of us with money, with, with the building, with, you know, the facilities, all of that, real important stuff. And I just feel like over the last year, I've seen a lot of things, you know, go through policy, sit in policy, that there's, there's a lot of focus on banning, you know, what can we ban next? Personal pet projects that one or two board members don't like, and they want to focus on, on getting rid of it or restricting access to things. And meanwhile, there's lots of real important things going on. And that, that's the kind of stuff that I want to focus on, kind of bring that back from the, to the seat. So appreciate your vote. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes our closing statement. And as well, it concludes our overall forum. So we would like to thank Mr. Andrews for running the live stream and our custodial staff for setting up this evening. Thank you to Mr. Landis, Mr. Galster, and Mr. Langer for your time. Thank you, of course, to the audience for attending and helping make this forum a success. A final reminder to vote on April 4th for your candidates. And good night.